Good afternoon, residents of Pittsburgh. This is Wolfgang Kroski, CEO of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. And we have, in continuation with our series here, an opportunity for you to meet Dr. Dill, who is a candidate for the Pittsburgh City Council. This is part of our effort to provide access to all the candidates that are running for Pittsburgh School Board, Pittsburgh City Council, and then also District 5 County Supervisor. You can go to www.pittsburgh.vote. In there, you can read the bios of every candidate. You'll also be able to see the links that go to their website or their Facebook pages if they've provided that. You'll also be able to, in addition to see the recording of today's interview, see the recording of all the other interviews that have taken place. You also have an opportunity to register to attend the Candidates Forum that we will be hosting at the end of this month. You can go ahead and register for there. You can also submit questions that can be asked of the candidates during each of those forums. So again, the website is www.pittsburgh.vote. And with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Dill to go ahead and introduce herself.
Thank you so much. I want to first thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about myself with the residents of Pittsburgh. And as you stated, my name is Dr. Nati Sadeel, and I have a Denny's to doctor story. At one point, I worked at Denny's, and I can remember having nothing but the clothes on my back and having anxiety about how I was going to feed my child. But I knew if I got a chance to go to work at Denny's, I would get tips and I would be able to feed my child. Yes, I know what it feels like to have nothing. Overcoming poverty and homelessness, domestic violence and teen pregnancy, all these things have helped shape the lens in which I view the world. And I have a profound sense of gratitude and compassion for others. So when I speak on issues like affordable housing and living wage, I'm speaking from experience. I'm speaking from my heart, from a place of compassion. I believe I have a well-rounded view of the world, and I know what it feels like to live in poverty, and I know what it feels like to go out of the country multiple times in one year on vacation. I am also blessed to have a family that has also helped shape the lens in which I view the world. My brother served in the US Navy, and the discussions we have continue to broaden my perspective on issues concerning our veterans. My mother is transgender male and also celebrating 24 years of sobriety this year. So again, I have compassion and my heart goes out to the LGBTQ+ community and all those that may be in recovery or currently struggling with addiction. My father was in corrections for 30 years, and he retired as a associate warden. So although I have strong passionate views on social injustice, I also have respect for law enforcement. So that's a little bit about my upbringing and the things that have helped shape the way in which I view the world. But today, I stand before you as Dr. Nati Sadeel, and I currently serve as the Regional Risk and Patient Safety Leader for Northern Kaiser Permanente, where I lead major change initiatives for 68,000 staff, 9,000 physicians, and ultimately serving 4.4 million members. I have four college degrees, a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Dominican University, two master's degrees from Holy Names University, a Master of Science of Nursing, and MBA, Master in Business Administration. And I have a doctorate degree from University of San Francisco. I am a doctor of nursing practice, and I have three national certifications. So today, I stand before you very blessed, and I know my Denny's to doctor story would not be possible without my strong spiritual foundation. In fact, I fell in love with Pittsburgh through serving at my church, The Rock Church, where pre-COVID, we held services at the California Theater. For almost four years now, I've been serving the city of Pittsburgh through my church. We did things like Random Max of Highness, where we walk the streets and literally hand out gift cards to strangers. We also have something we call Rock Outside the Walls, where instead of paying our tithes, which is 10% of our income, we would literally hand out that cash to strangers on the street. We'd go into Target and pay balances, and we'd go to gas stations and fill up people's cars. We would stay on the streets all day until all of our tithes had been handed out. We also have annual back-to-school picnics, where we gave free food and free school supplies. And I serve as a leader at my church, and it has been and continues to be my honor to serve Pittsburgh. My strong spiritual foundation has been my greatest strength, and I am unapologetic about stating everything I have been able to accomplish and overcome is because of the grace of God. So I've said a lot and shared about myself, but I save the best for last. Out of all of my accomplishments and titles, my favorite title, and the one I'm most proud of, is "Mother to my favorite and only child, Asa Mayu." It has been my greatest challenge and my most rewarding role that I've ever held. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Quite a breadth of experience and a lot of knowledge that you bring as a potential candidate, as a candidate for Pittsburgh City Council. And with all that you're doing, we talked a little bit before the interview started about, because I wanted to know exactly what your title was and these change initiatives. There's a lot of time and energy that goes into that, and you know, I have kids myself. I understand that. And so you're sacrificing time to run for office. Why? What is your why for running?
Why? Well, I have a passion for people. That's why I've been in healthcare for almost 18 years. And I am confident that I was put on this earth to stir up hope. This is my purpose, to stir up hope and help as many people as possible believe in themselves, achieve their goals, and reach their full potential. You know, our 44th president, Barack Obama, said, "Worry more about what you want to do and worry less about what you want to be." I know what I want to do. I want to stir up hope for as many people as possible. And City Council is a platform, I believe, allowing me to do that on a large scale, and I know I can make a difference. I'm guided by a mission to promote economic development and enhance the quality of life across Pittsburgh. And I know I can help Pittsburgh flourish to its full potential, because my purpose in life is to stir up hope and help as many people as possible believe in themselves, achieve their goals, and reach their full potential, and I believe I can help Pittsburgh do that.
Okay. I like how you reference that to stir up hope, and you know, the Chamber is a business organization. We are in existence to help businesses, to provide resources, to advocate for them, and to do everything possible to help them be successful. And right now, because of COVID, a lot of businesses see that there is no hope. So for our business community, if you have a successful campaign or elected, how would you stir up hope and help the business community here in Pittsburgh?
That's a really important question and very thoughtful. And I believe the first step to help support is to first, you know, understand from our local businesses what support looks like for them. This means listening to the individual stakeholders and understanding what they mean when they say, "Support us," to ensure you're actually being impactful and viewed as being supportive. You know, oftentimes, people will tell you what they want and need. If you just ask them, they will communicate. Bernard Shaw said, "The single biggest problem with communication is the illusion that it's actually happened." So point one that I would like to make to help would be, you know, give the stakeholders an opportunity to communicate what support looks like for them, so I can ensure I'm meeting their need from their perspective. Another point I think would be to show up. You know, what does that look like? It means when a new business opens, being present for the opening. There's a ribbon-cutting ceremony, being, you know, front row, and being genuinely excited about it. And when there's an issue, show up at the table, be a good partner, listen, and always close the feedback loop. Meaning, if you say you're going to do something, tell them what you did. If you're unable to do something, tell them why and what you're going to do to meet the gap, you know. And I think another thing to do to be supportive would be, you know, city-owned ventures. I think that we have the opportunity to invest in more city-owned ventures. And one idea I have is a city-owned bank. This would help local businesses and the city. With city-owned banks, we could offer below-market loans for our local businesses. And for city projects, we could save millions, as we would not charge interest to ourselves. You know, 50% of infrastructure costs are often related to interest alone. With city-owned ventures, we would be supporting local businesses, saving millions in interest, and all the profits would go to the general fund, which means increased revenue. Other city-owned ventures, I think, would generate substantial revenue would be city-owned health clinics and gas stations. You know, there are a lot of city-owned ventures that we could explore. These are just a few. But I really believe city-owned ventures would help local businesses generate revenue and help create new jobs, you know. I also believe there's an opportunity for us to explore mixed developments, mixed-use developments, meaning developments that combine housing and businesses. We can encourage our developers to partner with us in creating new jobs and businesses by combining housing and commercial use structures, similar to what they have at Bay Street in Emeryville. Those are just some of my ideas.
Okay. I am going to ask for your forgiveness. I'm going to deviate a little bit just because you got my brain turned on here with city-owned ventures. Are there other examples of cities who are doing this where it's been successful? Or just because I've never heard this, and this is like, I'm intrigued. So what exactly, you know, would it look like? And how would you, you talked about working with developers to partner with the city. How would you be able to rally that and make that happen?
Could you repeat that last part again? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just as if you were sitting on, you know, council and trying, you'd mentioned that you would like to get developers to work with the city in partnership in these city-owned ventures. And then also, you know, examples of like a city-owned gas station, that is, I've never thought of that. So just if you could provide a little bit more detail on that, or how your leadership, or how would you, you know, make this happen? I'm genuinely, this is, I am intrigued.
Yeah. So there's a lot of cities that are doing this and exploring this. The city-owned banks, San Francisco, right now is in the process of making that a reality. And so there's been other cities that have been successful in doing the city-owned ventures, because I've been doing a lot of research on it, which is one of the reasons that I got excited. I really got excited about the bank because of the interest cost. I mean, you know that, being a businessman of yourself, how much you can literally save. And all the funds go directly back into the general fund, the profits rather, which is really, really exciting. And so how I would leave that in is I spend a lot of time daily, you know, connecting with multiple stakeholders. And so a big part of that is understanding what people want, why they want. I know I'm one of five, so a lot of it is coming together and creating and collaborating on a new idea of what the future might look like, as opposed to all of us having our own separate individual ideas. And if you focus on why people want something as opposed to what, you often can find a common ground and create a future where everyone's needs are met. So a lot of times, it's me sitting down, understanding what my constituents, you know, other peers would want, why, and bringing the data, bringing information. I'm very data-driven, being a healthcare provider for almost 18 years. And when I want to get anything moved within Northern California, I have to consult and think about and interact with multiple stakeholders, 68,000 staff at any given time, you know, 9,000 physicians, we have 11 different unions, we have 21 hospitals. They all have CEOs, COOs, CNEs, CFOs, you know, we have 247 clinics. So it's really coming together with the minds and reminding people about why we're here, what's our purpose, what we want to accomplish, and always bringing it back to the why and connecting the dots and bringing data. It's oftentimes hard for people to argue when you bring data and examples of hardcore facts.
Yep. No, that is very true. Data over emotion always wins, so that's, that is very true. So with, you know, you talked about your experience, you know, you worked 11 different unions, all these CEOs, all these things, that the vision I have is that it takes a lot of unity to get everybody on board and on the same plan. And right now, one could argue the amount of division in our country and interstate and all that, but I think everybody could agree that we're not as unified as we could be. And just to keep it without getting too political, how do you see yourself being able to bring more unity to not just the council, but also to the city of Pittsburgh?
Yes. Well, I would work to bring unity and inclusion on all fronts by transferring the skills that I've learned and facilitated as one of the ambassadors for equity, inclusion, and diversity, in addition to my role at Kaiser for Northern California as the Regional Risk and Patient Safety Leader. I'm also ambassador for equity, inclusion, and diversity, and I facilitated open forums of candid conversations, allowing a safe space for healing, awareness, and education. I'm also a cultural humility master trainer, while facilitating sessions on being a lifelong learner with critical self-reflection, recognizing and changing power imbalances, and institutional accountability for systemic racism and discrimination off-front. I would bring all these skills to the city of Pittsburgh to fight discrimination, raise awareness, educate, and provide actionable tools for those who want to make a difference. In addition, as I said earlier, on a daily basis, I serve multiple stakeholders. As I stated, I have to unify at any given time, 68,000 staff, 9,000 physicians, different, you know, 11 different unions, 4.4 million members have to consider, they have a voice as well, 21 hospitals, 250 clinics. And a huge part of my role is to understand all of their interests, what is important to them, and why, then collaborate to create a future that meets everyone's intent and get us all moving together with a common defined goal. The main strategy for accomplishing this is first, listening. You have to listen and then understand what is important to people. And then third, understand why it's important and why they want what they want. The why is more important than the what. If you understand the why, you can build on that as a foundation to bring everyone together, identify a new what and how to meet everyone's why. This requires collaboration, not compromise. Collaboration is when you create a new future where everyone's why is met. Compromise means that no one really got what they wanted. So let me share a story to illustrate my point. There were two sisters, right? And they both wanted an orange, but there was only one orange. So they decided to compromise, split the orange in half. The first sister takes her half, peels it, throws a rind in a saucepan, right, and starts to cook it. Takes the inside of the orange, puts it in the trash. The second sister takes her half of the orange, peels it, throws a rind in the trash, and eats the inside. My point is, if they had, you know, taken time to understand what they wanted, why they wanted the orange, they could have collaborated and both got exactly what they wanted. Instead, they compromised, and they missed an opportunity. I will do my best to ensure Pittsburgh does not miss the opportunity to collaborate with any of its stakeholders.
So I love stories. I'm going to steal that story, so hopefully that's okay.
Please, please do.
Yeah.
Training. I didn't create all by own. I got it from IHI.
I was gonna say, I don't know, I've done change for like Crucial Conversations, you know, all those other frameworks for things, and I was like, man, I heard that one. I've heard similar, you know, like, especially when you talk about the book, you know, like Never Split the Difference, or some of these other ones out there, that's really cool. So, all right, so bringing the experiences that you have, the leadership you have in regards to bringing unity to the city of Pittsburgh. And it's really about, and correct me if I'm wrong, creating space for everybody and not having the need for compromise. And it's looking at what are people's needs and seeing that really everybody's needs can be met. Is that a fair assumption? Okay. So with that, there's obviously, you know, Pittsburgh is a very diverse community in lots of different ways, whether it's, you know, economic level, whether it's, you know, cultural background, educational. We have, we have a little bit of everything, and some could say that that is not necessarily possible to, you know, meet everybody's needs. What would you say to the naysayers out there that say that, you know, Dr. Dill, that sounds great, but come on, let's come to the real world, you know? And I'm sure you've experienced that in your work with, you know, Kaiser, that there's going to be those people that feel that it's just not possible.
Well, I would remind them all the things we thought were impossible that are very possible and common. You know, at one point, we thought it was impossible to fly, but people fly all the time, not so much in COVID. You know, at one point, we thought it was impossible to break a four-minute mile. It's done all the time, and by regular people who train, not just Olympians. So there's a lot of things that we thought were impossible, and there's things that we may still be looking at as impossible. We have a duty to try. You know, I work for healthcare, so when we, when a lot of times, it's like we have to get to zero harm. And our members, our patients, want us to get to zero harm, means we don't want anyone to come to the hospital and obtain an infection or leave worse than they were when they came, right? You come in for, you know, pneumonia, and then we let you fall, and now you have a broken hip. Well, we don't want any of that, so we want these things to be, we want these things to be possible, and we want the bad things to never happen. So I would remind people that it is our duty, you know, to find a way to make things happen. A lot of things were impossible before someone had enough courage to think outside of the box and think of a new way to do it. You know, I wouldn't be standing here before you if someone hadn't thought, hmm, we need to make a change. You know, as a woman, as a person of color, there's a lot of things that people would have never thought was impossible. You know, just my great-great-grandmother would have never thought it was impossible for me to be a leader, you know, over a Northern California region, certainly not a doctor, but it's definitely possible, and people do it every day, you know? So us going to go vote is something that is very normal, natural, but at one time, women couldn't vote, you know? So if someone didn't push past what they can see today and say, "No, this could be possible," then we wouldn't be living in the wonderful, you know, benefits that we have now that our ancestors did not. It was only because someone thought something could be possible that very much so seemed impossible at the time.
And do you see yourself as a person who thinks the impossible is possible here for the city of Pittsburgh?
Oh, absolutely. It's how I live my life, you know? I mean, I don't say I can remember a time when I had nothing, because it sounds good, because it really doesn't. And it didn't feel good. I mean, I literally had clothes. I remember the moment. I had nothing but the clothes on my back. I had titty shoes. I had jeans. I can tell you the outfit. And I had a baby. You know, I went to school, 17 units, full units. You know, it wasn't even, people told me it was impossible. I actually had to graduate from a continuation school because I had a child, not because of any problems with, you know, my grades were fine, but because if you had a child and they had free daycare, I had to go to a continuation school. Well, the continuation school said that it's not possible for you to go to a four-year college. You have to go to a JC if you graduate from a continuation school. But I found a loophole. By the grace of God, I went to a private university that was above and beyond all of that, you know? But if I had listened to what people told me was possible, I would not have accomplished four degrees. And furthermore, statistics says less than, it says 40% of teen moms graduate high school, 40%. And less than 2% get a college degree by the age they were 30. I had three college degrees by I was 30. If I looked at statistics and facts to tell me what was possible, I wouldn't accomplish half the way I accomplished, and I wouldn't be standing here before you. That's one of my strengths, is I have the ability to see where we are today, see where I'm at today, and the possibilities of where we could be tomorrow, you know? And I don't take credit for all of it myself. I work in teams. I leverage diversity. I love people who have different point of views than myself, because they see a different part of the puzzle that I'll never see, because they have a completely different lens, you know? So I embrace that. So I am definitely a person who walks and leads by faith, and I believe in people, you know, and I get lots of information, lots of perspectives, and that's part of the reason why I'm able to see a bigger picture, because I communicate and inquire, and I'm curious, you know, what other people think. So many different people with different perspectives, and especially those who think differently than me. So I'm definitely that person, that leader, who will say, "Yeah, I see this today, but, you know, I have a dream." And I'll keep on dreaming till we get to where we get to. And it's part of how I'm wired as a healthcare provider, is that we have an obligation, you know? I serve the people. It's the same thing with, if you're elected to City Council, you are here to serve the people. As a regional leader, I serve, and everything I do, I am acutely aware, impacts 4.4 million members. And it is my duty, it's my reasonable service, to find a way to make things happen that people say are impossible, because those that rely on us deserve it.
Yeah, absolutely. So with, you know, your experiences, a hearing, and I hate calling it your story, because it's not a story, it's your history of the experiences and the challenges that you've overcome. What do you think are the greatest challenges that Pittsburgh is facing now?
So I believe that our greatest challenge is economic development, and more specifically, attracting new businesses. The city has tried to bring in, you know, different supermarkets and different businesses, and unfortunately, unable to close a deal for various reasons. But I think there are a few things that we can do to help make Pittsburgh more appealing for new businesses and improve the quality of life for our residents and create new jobs all in the process. And I think the first thing, you know, one thing we can do is more green space and make the city more walkable. It's with the aid of, you know, it will help in aid in enticing businesses and improve the quality of life, simple things like painted bike lanes, wayfinding signs, you know, more green space can help the city be more appealing for current residents and future commerce. I think we have, no pun intended, but the opportunity to utilize opportunity zones, you know? We have areas that are already identified in the city of Pittsburgh as opportunity zones, you know? And insured opportunity zones are amazing, you know? They incentivize businesses to come to our city. You know, they defer, reduce, and in some cases, pay, you know, allow for them to pay zero on capital gain tax. And they're designed to promote long-term investment in designated neighborhoods across the countries, like the few neighborhoods that we have in Pittsburgh. And basically, it's a way to connect private capital into communities with untapped potential in a way that benefits both parties, and I believe that we can do, that we can utilize that here in Pittsburgh.
So, okay, with, how would you, as far as attracting businesses, we'll just, I don't want to have you spill all your secret sauce out here. And it's like, only do a little bit, but just a little bit on that one, attracting new businesses. And that's, I've asked other candidates who brought that up, kind of the same thing. What is maybe one or two strategies that you feel would be successful in attracting businesses to come to Pittsburgh?
Well, as I was saying, leveraging opportunity zones, you know, using that as an opportunity, because money speaks, you know? They can, you know, save millions and stuff on the capital tax and keep more of their profits and reinvesting and recreating newcomers, which will help with creating jobs and stuff. And simple little things, like I said, making more green space, you know, and more walkable. Other cities, literally, when I say walkable, literally, you know, you walk up and down the streets. And here, I feel like there's an opportunity to just add more greenery, more green space. So I encourage people to go out, to be healthy, to walk, and then also to have the city be, you know, nicer so that the commerce want to come. Also, I believe we can offer free Wi-Fi, high-speed optic Wi-Fi, that will also help attract as well. I mean, certain areas of the city where we have, like downtown or high areas where we can have commerce, we can offer free high-speed Wi-Fi, you know, optic fiber Wi-Fi as well, that will help with, you know, attracting other commerce as well. But really, making the city walkable, adding more green space. Sometimes we think we have to have these elaborate things, and it's the little details that matter that makes things pop and make it really nice, you know? And really selling the sizzle so we can close the deal. So, yeah. And then also, the other thing that I had said as well was the mixed-use development before, because, you know, oftentimes, developers, they want to, you know, build the homes and stuff, but we can also combine that with the mixed-use development also as opportunities, where they can still develop and do the homes, and then now also, we can put in some businesses, and we can create jobs all at the same time. I think that's also a great opportunity, and it'd kind of give it that feel as well, because everyone loves going to Bay Street, you know, in Emeryville. So that's another opportunity as well.
Okay, awesome. But, you know, saying that, you know, economic development is probably our biggest challenge right now is in the city of Pittsburgh. What do you feel is our greatest strength in the city of Pittsburgh?
My goodness. I think.
We gotta end on a positive note, right?
I know, yeah. So I, well, other than Sonics, which is my favorite thing, basically, whole wide world, with the strawberry and limeade, I think our greatest strength is untapped potential. We have limitless potential right here in Pittsburgh. And most of the people work outside of Pittsburgh, like myself, have to drive for hours. And, you know, a lot of people spend their money outside of Pittsburgh as well, out of convenience where they are and so forth, or we just don't have certain things here. And so just imagine if we were able to bring all of our homegrown talent back to Pittsburgh to work, you know, if we kept all of our money inside of Pittsburgh, we can truly achieve anything. I mean, we have everything we need right here in the city of Pittsburgh, you know, to get the results we've been waiting for. We have a top-tiered community college and high school that can supply our residents with all the knowledge and training and skills that we need, you know? We have a bright future, and I'm just excited about the possibilities. Really, really excited.
Well, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for making yourself available to the chamber so that we could have this interview. It was very nice getting to know you. It's as my, you know, resident here, and you see everybody's posters or their signs or this, and it's like, you know, it'd be really nice to meet, you know, each of the candidates. And that's why we're doing these interviews, so that candidates have an opportunity to not just, here's my platform and my bullet. here's my platform and my bullet points, but like, here's me, and to share a little bit of their, their story, their history, their, what has brought them to this point. And want to thank you for participating. For those that are watching, I would direct you to www.pittsburgh.vote. There you can view the videos of all the interviews that we have done. You can also submit questions that will be asked during our candidates forum. You can read the bios of every candidate, get links to their websites and their Facebook pages, and do what you can to inform yourself as a voter. So again, it's www.pittsburgh.vote. And with that, I'd like to return the time to Dr. Bill to give us that why, why we should vote for you or your closing speech, whatever, however you want to call it.
Thank you. You know, in nineteen forty-four, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt talked about the right of every American to have a job. That was true then with a one-point-two-percent unemployment rate. And it is true now with our current thirteen-point-three-percent unemployment rate for the state of California. At this moment of economic and racial exclusion, we face a crisis of economic insecurity. If I'm elected, I will advocate for a strategy to build an economy that produces economic security and dignity for all, where everyone who wants to work has a living wage job. A combination of wage subsidies, targeted government spending, support for workers with dependents, and increased training and job-matching programs represent the viable strategy I hope to roll out to meet the demands for guaranteed employment. We are facing a crisis of economic and racial exclusion, and I intend to be a catalyst to build an economy that produces economic security and dignity for all. As I mentioned earlier, I have overcome a lot of challenges, homelessness, poverty, and I know how to bridge the gap from where you are today to where you want to be tomorrow. It's how I went from Dennis to Doctor, and I do it daily as a healthcare leader over a region. And I would love to do it for Pittsburgh. We cannot afford to be paralyzed, because we cannot see past our current legislation. We have to create the future we want, the future Pittsburgh deserves. Get creative and find a way to make things happen, because that is why we are elected. And I would love the opportunity to serve as your new city council member. Vote Dr. Deal by November third, because we know we can start voting early in October. So vote Dr. Deal. Thank you so much, and it's been my pleasure and honor for you to get to know me a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a good day.